Right.
I'm assuming you folks are not meeting on the fifth of July.
Work all the time.
So to be honest, Nathan.
So, August ninth. So, everybody that's here tonight concerning this subdivision, there won't be another meeting. About this subdivision until August ninth. So it's, it's a ways away. So write that, write that down. In, obviously, things are subject to change based on how things go for them. We'll do the best to make sure that if something changes, we get you notified. Karen.
Cam, have we got a full set of plans in the. Uh, billing inspector's office?
I believe we do, okay.
So we have a full set of plans in the billing inspector's office, so if anybody wants to come in and take a look at those.
But they're going to change. Yeah.
Changed that lot that was twenty twenty?
Yeah, I fixed the lot number, but I appreciate you telling me.
Alright, so. Okay. So. Go ahead, Genie.
Times, I've been in three times. Trying to get copies of the um, pushing game that's been in front of us is. If the assessor isn't in the office, it's not successful. So it would be nice to. You know, if that office is open with one or the other, the building inspector. Or the town assessor, I mean, um, it's. It would be nice that maybe it actually available. You know, the building inspector does have his job, like, it's not.
We're gonna take in. Guess maybe we could have him set in the. In the office room upstairs, the only, only concern. I would end up having is that. Somebody could walk off of it. Because nobody's watching, uh. Which, uh. It has happened to some of the piles of the planning board had in the past.
We will.
Want a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we need a motion for continuation.
Take a motion for continuation to August nine. August ninth, first item on the agenda.
Yeah. All those in favor? Thank you. Alright. Yeah, no, I'm gonna, I gotta. I gotta, uh, get a check in to make sure.
Yeah.
This plan here. Goes in one of these books because this one has two.
That can go upstairs. Do you want to put the sun? It's the one that Bosco handed out, do you?
Yeah, yeah, so take that.
Okay, so this one.
I will, I can keep it with, um.
Well, yeah.
They're probably better off, but they, you know, anyways, they're gonna get trashed. Right, and this one here is that, that's missing. Alright, this is the one missing the plan. Alright.
Excuse me?
Any chance of getting that stuff online?
No, Errol, no. No, you, you can't have it. Actually, once you get these, actually, Cam probably can get them up online. Cause I'm asking for a digital copy myself.
Yeah, I mean, the IT.
If, yeah, if Steve can get it on the site.
Yeah.
Yeah. But he's gonna block you from it.
That's okay, that's okay.
Yeah, soon as, as Kristen can get the plans to Cam, then we can work on. Having the, uh, IT guy get those plans up. On the website. And, um. That way, obviously, that would take care of what Genie was looking for. Yeah. Alright, we're cleaning up a few more pages here, and then.
I'm just gonna roll yours.
Alright. You're gonna take these as well, Cam?
What's that?
Take these as well.
This is in regards to the pies, that is.
Okay, I'm pulling up this stuff. You're right in front of Fred. And then, uh. I gotta learn how to do this. I wanna do this for the selectmen when I'm doing work. Okay. Okay. That's that. Okay. I'm gonna introduce this one. This is a continuation for application for a major subdivision. Map four sixteen, lot twenty eight, two oh six Nottingham Road, Deerfield, New Hampshire. For Denise and Michael Galant, thirty two Wyman's Landing, Danville, New Hampshire. And, um, just pardon me for a minute, I have to go get a drink of water.
My office is always so big. What's that?
Scott, you have, uh, mayonnaise?
Yeah, we just got it yesterday afternoon.
I say, we just got it too, so obviously. Yeah, have, end up having to make some, uh. Review the comments and. Address those, if you think, uh.
There's a couple we can talk about tonight.
Yeah.
For the record, Attorney Jim Raymond has not. Provided comments on the driveway agreement yet.
We still got that too. It's not. It's not you guys' fault, it's, you know.
I don't expect. Any significant comments from him, we did share. Previously approved one.
Right.
With you guys, and it was, you know. Very similar.
There's, like us, Scott, only got comments yesterday.
Okay.
He hasn't been in a position to be able to take and make all of whatever changes that gotta be necessary.
Yeah, cause Steve sent them to me about seven o'clock last night.
Yeah. Yesterday afternoon, we got them, yeah.
I know I texted you, I said I was gonna call you.
Yeah.
But. I got so busy today.
I was out doing test bits all day, too.
So. Apologize. Obviously, you got a chance to read them today.
Yeah, we've talked about them a little bit, um. So, Scott Frankos from Hampshireland, I think they have a little.
Yeah, go ahead.
Scott Frankos from Hampshireland, consultants with me is Denise and, and Mike Galant, the owners of the property. As you know, we started this a while ago, we came in preliminary, talked to the town. And there was discussion that it could be a four lot, private subdivision, private road subdivision. We came in with that, and then we reduced it to three for a number of reasons. And now, unfortunately, they're, they're, they're debating whether or not to reduce it to two because of the com- the cost of the road is. Is gonna be more than they anticipated, obviously, to do. Yeah, it's, it, they're not a developer, they're, they're property owner trying to. Create a lot really for their son out back. So we pared it back, pared it back, and now with Steve's comments. Um, there, there's talk of guardrail and different stuff like that, it makes it seem like it's a, a full-blown road. That wasn't what they. They anticipated, um, so there's a lot of the comments, and, and I can talk with Steve about some of them. Um, there are a couple that the board has to take action on. Um, I think that's what Cam was kinda alluding to. So that's where we're at, like we said, we got the comments yesterday afternoon, we have.
Do you want more time to go over this stuff with Steve?
Yeah, we're gonna, uh, well.
You gotta address a lot of it.
Eighty percent of them were planning design matters. Are just adding details and, and, and a lot of, lot of the stuff like that. There's talk. I can just start at the, the first one, I, I think I remember. Listening to the Nottingham Planning Board, and they acknowledged this subdivision and said they had no problems with it, I, I believe at one of their meetings. I don't know if that's been clarified or not.
Kinda speak that, so I've spoken with Blair, who is there. Um, planner.
Yeah.
And when we looked at this, so this is similar to another case we had. Where if there is an access in one town. Uh, the road access. And then there's property. Um, in a budding town, then. That a budding town needs to also approve it. The thing is that that board can only comment on the access. You know, um. And in this case, the access is in Deerfield. Right, the land in question is Nottingham. The planning board was notified. The town planner is aware. You know. On the plan right now, uh, Scott has. A signature for. For the Nottingham Planning Board, Steve Peach believes that. You know, when you go to register this plan, they're not going to unless they have that signature. I don't think talking to the planner that the Nottingham Planning Board is gonna have any issues with this. You know, they can't comment on the access, it's not their town.
And I do believe they did bring it up and discuss it and vote. That they had no issues at the, at one of the meetings, it should be in some of their minutes. I don't remember the, the date, but.
Alright, I can, um, I'll talk to the planner tomorrow.
It was, it was a little couple minute clip in one of the meetings that went by real quick if you didn't pay attention, so.
We, we can find that, Ben, if that. Is the case, then. You know, I personally think I would satisfy that.
And, and typically with these, as, as you guys know, with, dealing with Northwood and stuff is just a quick signature, it's not coming, going to the board and everything else. Uh, and then as we work down Steve's. Comments, um. The deer, the, the fire department, um. I'm assuming that's done through town. That we don't initiate that, or, or is that? Number five, on the second page, it mentions that the fire department should review it. I mean, every town's a little different, usually the. The towns initiate that to the fire department and try to get a review out of them. Uh, going back up a little bit, the number four, talking about a, a performance bond and stuff, is that really something that's necessary for? For this?
I think. I think what we'd have to do on number four is. See where we finally wind up with, what kind of driveway you build.
Right.
I understand where, where you headed, um. Until we, we know exactly what they're building, I think we'd have to. We'd have to look at that number four right, you know, once. Keach reviews everything again.
Right.
The problem is. If it's on the plans and it doesn't get built that way, and we don't. There's no one really way to enforce it. Other than. Other than saying, okay, there's no COs or building permits or anything until it meets our standard. I mean, that, that would be the only other.
And, and isn't that the way the town used to do it, is build it or bond it? Until you probably had problems with that, but. Well, you could end up building it. And, well, we'd have to then. Which I think you hold. Bond it, you'd have to build it first before we would. Put it into, file it to registry. Okay, yeah. That's what happened with that last one.
I mean, you're gonna have to build most of it before you can do what you gotta do anyway. As far as your driveways and stuff.
And, and is that something that you leave up to Steve to kinda figure out? On the.
On the, the number four?
Yeah.
Well, that's something we would have to make the ultimate decision on.
Yeah. Uh, number two on page three, which is talking about. A conditional use permit. Is that needed in this situation? He's talking about a hundred foot wetland setback, this is an existing road. Of course, the road goes between two wetlands, so we're, we're within that hundred foot setback, but it's an existing road, does that? We're actually, are we getting into the wetlands or? No, we're, we're using. Boulders to, we're, we're fixing the road within where it is, trying, we're staying out of the wetlands. Yeah.
Yeah.
I would say we probably not, we're not looking at it, the condition is permanent.
No.
Okay. If you're getting into, into the wetland, yeah.
Yeah. You're, you're staying, your, your road is staying where the road is.
Right.
You're just upgrading it.
Correct.
The only thing that's new is the driveway. The, and then, yes. And then, you're actually going by. The house and making a hammerhead, that part's new, but. The, uh, as you come down the road. You know.
All the way to the house will be.
Yeah, you've got all the ditches and stuff in there that we were looking for. And, um.
And, uh, then you work through, there's a bunch of, of comments on adding notes here and there and different things to the sheets. On his planning design matters notes. Page four, or when that. Page five. And it's one of the bulleted ones under fourteen. And it's the one, two, three, fifth one down on page five. Talks about the roadway construction hammerhead and, and that they, given the low traffic and just fate to be served by this planned. Private way, we recommend the applicant request and grant a waiver. For allowing a hammerhead. That isn't a waiver we asked for, but we would be asking for that waiver. Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Hammerhead instead of a cul-de-sac, yeah.
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 I mistaken, I thought when we walked that, when we talked about that, the last time when we walked, and we, we said the hammerhead.
Yeah, we did.
Hammerhead or cul-de-sac.
Right, and that's what we just wanted, we.
And teach, teacher's saying that the. Regulations call for a cul-de-sac.
Okay.
And we can grant a waiver to, into a, uh. Yeah, I don't, I don't see any problem with that.
No. So they're looking for a stop sign. When there no outlet. That's just so people start driving down the driveway.
Stop, stop sign seems to be a little bit.
I have a two thousand foot driveway and had people drive by me. Like, looking at me going like, hmm, what's this guy doing here? And then they have to turn around and come back. So that, that's, that's the only reason he's asking for that.
How about the stop sign? Is that really?
I got one at mine.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
How many, how many people off your road? How many lots?
What, you get three? You got three, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. He's got a dirt road too.
Okay. A lot of the other stuff is, he, he's talking about adding underdrain in certain areas, and it seems he's got almost four hundred feet of underdrain on the. On the road. Um, of course, all this adds up and makes it very expensive for them. Put in.
Did he give you?
Station eight seven, um, eight seventy-five to the end. Cut in there. This being a private road, I.
Except ditches.
Yeah, I'm not.
No, we'll wait that.
Yeah.
You, I mean, you want the ditches to keep your road together, if you don't put the ditches in, your road's not gonna hold up.
Right. You'll, not, but if we had, if this was a, it's gonna be a town road, I think we'd, we'd be looking for underdrains. But, uh. Would it not?
It's a fill going down there.
It, it's a, just as you get past the house, it's a, it's a cut and then into a fill, so it's gonna drain. Drain out the swales and, and, um.
And once you pull those rocks out of there. You won't be. Won't be a fill anymore, there should be a hole.
Yeah, you did comment about the, um, the cover on the proposed twelve inch.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that and make sure.
And, well, you could, you could probably end up looking, uh, switching to a concrete.
And reduce the.
And, and stick and stay with it two feet.
Okay.
Was, was it class five, is it higher, higher risk, right?
Yeah, um, but you're not, you're not, you don't have the speed. They could get away with four thousand. Last four. And they have that right up in Nottingham. Right up at Shea, they invited, you don't have to.
So as long as we spec it out as RCP and.
Yeah.
Right. Cause obviously taking into consideration, you got two feet of cover.
Yeah, you, you're just gonna be.
Okay.
You don't have to worry about driving over. So Steve was looking for guardrail.
Yeah, he mentioned guardrail, which.
Is that where the, the, the boulders are going?
Yeah, he had said, well, he said, he didn't necessarily say that. They needed to put guardrail in, but they said, he said he wanted a detail of a boulder retaining wall with the ability to put guardrail on top. I, I. Can't find that question right off.
There's no guardrail there now. And.
Okay, it's right under fourteens.
He's probably looking right here.
Oh, in that section?
Yeah. Stack the rocks up.
Yeah. Yeah, they could do another row of, of boulders. Imagine they're gonna find plenty of it. No guardrail.
No.
Rocks.
You got plenty of rocks over there. Just make sure that when you do. Put your culvert in that one section there, that you just got good head walls for yourself. So that they're easy to clean out. And, or, you, you know, you, you could use the rocks or you. If they're cheaper, but you can also buy a flared end section if you wanted to, but I would just use the rocks and take the time to, to build a good. Good head well on those. Those would be the things that Keach would look at. For, uh, when Jack Cork goes out for inspection.
And I think the other, other thing that we kinda need to discuss is about the stormwater. Design, we got, I believe we got a waiver for that, and then he's recommending, no. I think, I think he's just looking for your calc sign. It, it, it seems like he just wants swell calc, you know, velocity in the swales. So what he says, although it's understand, planning board granted a waiver. Need to submit a, a stormwater management report, right? Prepared submission duck. Calculations sufficient to demonstrate. Compliance with provisions in section. About regarding maximum flows, velocities and roadside ditches. Obviously, we're trying not to do a, a full-blown. Drain and plan design on it, um. If we provide. Calculations for over pipes and roadside ditch velocity, I mean, it's gonna, if. Anything over five, five percent, we typically want it. Spec it out as rip-rope anyways. And. I think there's only really a section, one section or. At the very end there, that's, that's. Come close to that. I guess. Probably, can you, I assume you can take him and do a, a drainage area for the twenty-four. For the two culverts, is that what you said? I'm sorry. Just how much is going to those two culverts? Total agri, agri is going to the twenty-four inch and make sure you get. It should be at least a twenty-five year storm.
Yeah.
And then at the, at the very end, past the house going down to the. Hammerhead, we get a over seven percent slope if we rip-rope those slopes and.
Yeah.
I mean, that's gonna protect that.
Yeah.
So really, for the hydrocat or the, for the drainage calculations, we just, we should just provide him with the. Capacity or the, um. Calculations to prove that the culverts are sufficient.
Right.
Okay. And, um, there was one of his comments about the sightline at the entrance. Um, to the right, it, it doesn't go on to the property. As you're pulling out of the property that, from the existing driveway. Um, we are. Noted that. Vegetation has to be cleared on the property that the willons own adjacent to this, but. On the property to the right. I think we know anything within the right of way has to be.
Yeah.
Now, i- it's kind of just. Barely clips a corner of their property and. I think, I think we were out there, you could.
We, we have pretty good line of sight.
Looking to.
The only one I had to question was with going back towards Cat's Cradle.
Going back towards Nottingham.
Backwards Deerfield. Had no problem the other way.
Going towards Nottingham, like, we had to clear trees.
Yeah, he, he's got that, hold on the plan.
The other one, as you're pulling out in the driveway, going to the right, heading back into Deerfield. Um, where does the line of sight come, it's Cat's Cradle. Right there, uh, where does that line of sight come in reference to that?
I don't know what Cat's Cradle is. The house across the street.
The house across the street.
Neighbors. Uh, it's basically, it's basically. Okay, it's made the red house right across your street.
Yeah.
The next place up, heading, coming towards Deerfield.
Yeah, the, the four hundred, it's four hundred, right? Yeah, four hundred feet. It's about a hundred and twenty-five feet past their corner. I, I go.
So the, it's their driveway.
Yeah, when you look at that site plan there, Don.
Yeah.
The, the, you see where the, when they make the right. Where the property line is.
Yeah.
Right there. That's, that would be the only thing that looks like that there would be any question right there. So if you're coming out of the driveway, going to the right. That, that would be.
The neighbor's piece, right?
Yeah, that little.
First neighbor.
Yeah.
And then everything else is within the right away after that, so if there's. Wouldn't, don't believe it was.
Their driveway comes in right where you have.
Yes.
I think we talked about, I think we talked about opposite directions.
You're talking to the left.
As you come out of the driveway.
To right, you're gonna come towards Deerfield.
Exactly.
So my question is, that's where, that's where the place has rest roughed or thing.
Right.
It's right on the top of that knoll.
But if you look at this line of sight line.
The profile.
He's got the four hundred feet, which is into the center of the road.
Okay.
And then, but literally right fifty feet from where the first station is. Is the driveway to the house right on the right.
Next door, yeah.
Yeah.
Both drivers are side by side.
Yeah.
Eric, when we were out there, wasn't there a tree on the, going towards Nottingham?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, they've got some trees there they gotta take down.
Thank you. Within the right.
Right.
Anyway.
Um.
No, they're all on his property.
One that Gary and I had seen.
It was right in the road.
Right in the, within the right away.
Yeah, it was on the side of the stone wall.
On, road, roadside, stone wall.
That's gonna be gone tomorrow.
No more issue.
Um.
If you're gonna take it down, then I guess you don't have to worry about it, but it's.
I can place down all the trees.
Yeah.
Um. So. We, we've eliminated the. The underdrain.
Right.
Um, the guard rail.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna need a stop sign. Um, just, just because, and then that no outlets.
Can we make it one of those little ones that you see?
You gotta get the most obnoxious stop sign.
Really big, buy your own lights.
Kinda like the big green monster to have to send with. People don't stop for those either. Um. The, uh. You know, um, like, like. Well. This stop's gonna be facing. I, I understand that, but people drive down my driveway and it says, keep up.
You, you can certainly end up putting up a sign saying.
Private road, you know. Um, it just, you know.
Don't come down here.
Yeah. Um, what else were we just talking about? So the underdrain, you know, we've, we, we got rid of the underdrain, um. The, the idea of, uh, potentially having to put up a bond.
Right.
Um, obviously, I need you to go through everything with Steve first.
Yep.
And then, um. We need to see. You know.
Could it maybe be pared down to, to culvert? Installations and some.
Well, something like. You definitely gotta get your gravel on there and, um, that's something that the. The inspection, um, is gonna wanna say, you know. Jeff Cork, the inspector. Maybe, um, once you get all of this through, then we see where we're at and we can figure out what we can do. At this point, we need to see everything on the drawings and then.
But typically what would end up happening, you, you have the choice of bonding it. Or building it, but you, you won't register, register the, the plan, the subdivision.
Until it's signed up.
Until it's all constructed and part of the plan.
So, were you planning on trying to build the house this year?
No.
Okay.
And that's the thing I was just gonna ask is about the driveway. Did you say we'd have to build the driveway?
The driveway wouldn't be a concern as much as.
That would be more the building.
Road.
When they built that lot.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right, so. It's. So you're, you're okay with your hammerhead?
Let's, uh. Why don't we, we got. Talking about, uh, at least three issues here now, maybe we can take and have a vote.
Yeah.
On these to make it clear and.
Yep. Right.
And then, uh, you don't have to worry about it. Uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, to waive the cul-de-sac and grant a waiver for hammerhead. At, uh, for the end of the road.
That's the first one.
Well, well, let's put them all together.
Yeah, let's put them all together and then the underdrain.
To eliminate the, uh, the, the need for an underdrain from, what was it? Well, an, an underdrain at all.
Okay.
And, uh, eliminate the, uh, requirement for guard rail. And replace the guard rail with, uh, with boulders. Based, uh, well.
Two, two to three feet apart.
Three feet apart.
Yeah.
And a, a waiver for the scene.
Right. The, uh, cover on the pipe.
On.
If, if. The waiver is only granted if used concrete pipe. For the cover.
Right.
For that would be four.
Right.
Four waivers. Um. It, yes. Yeah, we don't.
We require.
We have waived the conditional use permit.
Waive the condition use permit.
That would be five.
So. Underdrain guard rail, CUP. Waiver for hammerhead, I'm sorry, I missed one of those.
And then.
And then.
The cover on the pipe.
Reinforced concrete. As long as, as long as reinforced concrete is used instead of a. HDP. That all five? Second.
Okay, all those in favor of granting the five waivers?
I.
Oh, no, it's okay. Okay. I'm just looking for sympathy.
Passes bad guy.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So this. Has to go back to, I mean, Scott's gonna talk to Steve and.
Yeah.
Make all these changes and then we have to come back again. And then there's a few more changes that have to be made and this is like our tenth iteration and. I'm just concerned because of the amount of money we're spending on paper.
Unfortunately, we have to do this, I, and I understand what your concerns are, um. It's, it, it's just the process that we have to go through, um. I think that, that, um, you know. I know that. Scott's time costs money, the paper costs money and, you know, obviously Steve's, Steve's time costs money, but. It's, it's just. In the past, when things weren't handled this way. Things weren't built correctly and. It, it just, it, it just causes problems that. Seem to just keep, kept going down the road and getting bigger and I understand your concerns about the money. Um. But just on some of the waivers that we granted you tonight will help you a lot, um. And hopefully be, between Steve and Scott, they can resolve this stuff pretty quick. Um. The other issue would be is that. Um, you know, when it comes to building this, um. You know, there's gonna be. It will have to be inspected, um. You know, we're gonna have to try to figure out how much you think you're gonna build in one year or, or, or not build in a year. Um. But we just need to get these things kinda worked out and get it on paper. So that when people go into that office thirty years from now. It's all on paper.
Yeah.
That's, that's the whole reason we go through this. Hey. It's not just to make you spend money, I. Trust me. I understa- I understand your concerns.
And to keep Scott employed.
There's plenty of work out there right now. We do have one more question about the, the lot counts. If it went and, and not saying they're gonna do this, but if it went down at just two lots. Does that change the road standard or is it still gonna be the same? Say they, they combine the big lot and the house lot together and left the, the one lot.
Technically, we, in the, we could narrow the road. We've made it, allowed him to be, allow the road to be narrower with, with only two lots. So we can end up saving some money there.
And that, doesn't that hinder them in the future if they wanted to say, put some.
You know, and. I mean, yeah, I mean. If you're gonna, in the future, eventually do something else. Uh, that's your decision, man.
But if you didn't, you'd have to start all over. Once you put one more lot there, then you'd have to start.
You have to start over again and. Obviously, you're not gonna wanna spend the money again. You know, Scott would do it again. But in, in all honesty, if. What I tell people is that. The more that you get on the plans for the things that you could potentially wanna do. Even though it costs more money now. It's still gonna be cheaper in the long run because when you wanna do it. It's already on the plan and you don't have to come back here again.
No, I understand that. I just feel like every time. You know, this is the fifth meeting. It's like we find one more little thing and then Scott has to change it and ten sets of plans are.
Well, what happens a lot of times, the, the initial plans that come through miss things that we're looking for. And that's why. What you said, you know, it's one this or it's this or it's that and. And unfortunately, that's, a lot of times, that's what happens.
And then you'll have to decide. Whether you want to, uh. Post a bond or whether you wanna build the road or. Before we record the plan.
Well, we had plans that we, we sent the plans out for the road to be built.
Yeah.
Um, and get an estimate. We were planning on moving forward, but. This kind of took the wind out of our sails.
There's not much I can do about that.
I think with the waivers and stuff and I'll talk with Steve and we can regroup and.
Okay. So you want a continuation for a month or so?
Yeah, it shouldn't take anymore than a month to get. I'll reach out to Steve and we'll, I mean, get some type of schedule together with him and.
I mean, if you wanna come back in two weeks, that's, I don't know, what do we have, Cam? You have ever sores.
We can go out a month.
Okay, I, I, I don't think we have a lot.
Well.
Probably June.
Well, the twenty-fourth is obviously two weeks from today. And, um. The first meeting in June. Is on the seventh. Oh, no, fourteenth. Flag day.
All right.
So that, that would be roughly, you know, a month out.
Yeah, we get, have it anything else on the agenda?
For the fourteenth? Not that I know of, no.
Want a, want a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Do you wanna continue to the fourteenth of June? Okay.
We'll make a motion for a continuation to, uh, the fourteenth of June, first item on the agenda.
Okay. All those in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Scott, do you want the plans?
We'll need one set anyways.
Yeah, keep, keep yours. And, uh. And then, I don't know what those guys are doing, but.
Will I keep that or? Oh, I'll let you have it.
All right.
Free, free as your friend.
Thanks.
And Scott, this is up to you, but if you wanna have like a.
Okay. This is a.
Yeah, that's full size.
Okay, that's fine. A public hearing for application for a minor subdivision map fourth nineteen lot sixty-nine dash two. Middle Road, Deerfield, New Hampshire, Charles and Sherry Sanborn, one thirty-five Middle Road, Deerfield, New Hampshire. Are, one of our planning board members has stepped down. Fred, you wanna pull side?
Oh. Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Eleven by seventeen's are easier on the table, but the.
Yeah, right.
Twenty-two, thirty-four are easier on the eye.
Oh, yeah.
Whenever you're ready, Mr. Chairman.
Take it away.
I'm Tim Lavelle from James Lavelle Associates, representing, uh, Sherry and Charles. Uh, Sanborn. We have is a ten acre lot, which is, um, map four nineteen lot sixty-nine two. Is on Middle Road. We're proposing to split it into three lots. Um. The lot number that would retain, uh, sixty-nine two would be three point one seven acres. Uh, lot sixty-nine three would be three point oh one and sixty-nine. Four would be three point eight one acres, um. We've done test pits on this. We had done them a year or so ago. Uh, they are flagged as far as, um, monumentation. Um, partially set, uh, there, there is more to do. Um. We've got well radius, fourth thousand square foot receiving areas. Uh, and what we've done is we're showing a driveway easement, which would. Grant access to lots, uh, sixty-nine three and sixty-nine four. Avoiding wetland, um, crossings. However, on the cover sheet, you'll notice we put a, um. Note in there that says judge and fill permit for possible individual driveways are the responsibility of the lot owners. Um. Most of the time, it's kinda driven into our head at the state level to avoid wetlands. But in the same breath, uh, we've been asked to split driveways even by the, um. Wetlands board, so. Kinda leaving, leaving an option for both ways, um. Sometimes if she had driveway, it's not a problem. Sometimes it is. Um, that's his fairly simple and straightforward. I will point out though, on sheet two, note number five. Um, I had originally. Kinda done what Roscoe had done with the lot numbers and screwed them up a little bit. Uh, and that note, uh, reflects them. Incorrectly, so the note should read, the driveway easement shown on. Lot sixty-nine two is for the benefit of sixty-nine, three and four. And the driveway easement on sixty-nine three is for the benefit of sixty-four. Uh, so I had. Kinda. Screwed up the numbers. Cam had caught that on the cover sheet in the other sheet, but. Uh, I missed it in that note, so that's a note that I would have to fix. Uh, as well as, um, note two on that sheet. Shows owner of record of sixty-nine one and it's supposed to be sixty-nine two. And it's correct on the cover sheet. Corrected at one spot, not in the other. Any questions?
You know, the, uh. Not, uh, not showing, um. The monumentation between lots. Three and four in the back. Or, uh, on the front. Similarly, between lots, uh, two and three in the front. We do, do have an iron rod set in the, in the back.
Yeah, those would have to be set. We also, if you notice. And it isn't, um, pointed out, we were proposing to put an iron rod. In in the middle of the line between two and three. Just because the line is so darn long that one in the front and one in the back is. Um, but all the monumentation. We can have set within a week. We just so happened to set an iron rod there when we were. Um as far on the back of two, when they were staking out the original lot two, so that we we used it. So it would save us from setting a point. All the monumentation. Uh can be set and shown as step on the plan before we even bring it to my hours.
Okay, so if somebody buys a lot sixty nine three. And they decide to put their own driveway in. Does the easement go away?
The easement on.
Sixty nine three.
No, because sixty nine four would need it. Sixty nine four would have to also put their own driveway in.
Well, that's what I what I was wondering is if somebody bought that lot and didn't want an easement on the property. To come through. So somebody built the driveway, their own driveway, it'd be another driveway and intersection in the.
Yes, they bought that lot and didn't want an easement on it. They bought the wrong lot.
Okay, yeah, okay. Just just making sure.
If sixty nine four and sixty nine three put their own driveways in, they can all.
That's.
Agree to have the the easements go away, but.
I think that. They're gonna have, somebody's gonna have to set a toll up.
It and like I said, I mean, for forty years, the wetlands, well, not forty years. Thirty years before that, forty years ago, the wetlands board wasn't so bad. We used to move a lot of stuff that they would cringe at nowadays. Um driven through our heads, avoid, avoid, avoid. And then I I did a project in Sandown and the wetlands board and conservation asked me to fill twice as much and do two drive.
Really?
And then the weird part was family members bought the lots and shared one, shared a driveway anyway. But I had two permits for them.
Uh on uh lot four, it looks like. Looks like you probably already taken this into consideration, but what we'd need is a uh. Area of wet and area of wetland soil, just to show that we've got. Was it two and a third acres or whatever it is on uh. By upland soil.
Yep, we can do that. The upland and wetland.
Yeah.
So you need to set the rest of the property. Points.
Yep.
And um.
Two, three, four. Six iron rods.
And then you're looking for the upland soil on lot four.
Lot four. The wet wetland soil and the upland soil and just to show that we've got. Sufficient upland soil to meet the uh requirement in the in the.
We can, we can do this for all three lots. Just kind of put it.
Yeah, you might as well, but.
Put it in the in with.
Yeah.
The area calc that are there now.
Right. Certainly looks like the other two are not.
The calc was done.
Okay. The wetlands that. Could have thought this, the wetlands set I should be hungry.
Yep.
Where is that in your regulations? I'm not questioning you. I'm just, I want to see it.
It's a wetlands conservation district. Um so for any new laws. Yeah.
We I went through the reg.
Two ten point three district boundaries under.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we can. We can do that. And lastly, we have sent this off to the state. Uh we get an email to. Let them know whether the test bits were still flagged. We checked them. They are. We've sent that back, so. Uh Eric Thomas will probably be out there this week. And like Roscoe mentioned, they have to walk the lots. They. They've got to put boots on ground by. By their own rules.
Yes, have any questions?
What you got? I guess the. The question is going to be, you're going to have enough enough space on lot four to be able to hundred foot separate to be able to get a house in it?
I would say so, yeah. Fifty, like show a house. If you'd like.
Yeah, one sheet uh. It's three, I guess.
We would just have to. Turn that house or look. I mean, we drew some pretty large houses with the possible dwellings and.
Yeah, certainly taken.
It looks like we drew. We drew a fifty foot wide house in there, so we could just turn it.
You want to do a conditional based on this? You still have to. You've done your test bits already.
Yep.
Right? States get a walkthrough.
Yeah, I think that'll be this week. We submitted it a couple of weeks ago, so.
We'll need to get a state subdivision approval number on here anyways.
Right.
So you can. You want to continue for two weeks?
Two weeks enough?
Two weeks is enough for for myself and I can show up with my logs.
Here. Two weeks.
I'll make a make a motion for continuation to.
May, may what? Um twenty fourth, twenty fourth. All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
All right.
Don't you wish they were all that quick?
We may have some on Zoom. There is Mary on Zoom?
Do you want these plans back? At least one anyway. Well, you can flip them around, put them back through the plotter. I know. Separate comes and rolls.
You got one copy, Cam, right?
Is she there?
I don't know. Mary, are you on Zoom?
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Ed.
So on the previous one, when you talked about building the road. And that you would hold reg- register in the the project. Is there a timeline for them to build that road? In other words, if they take five years to build that road?
Don't know if they'll not have a.
They will have anything.
It won't have a recorded plan.
Right.
They don't have nothing, basically. They don't have nothing.
But if they, but if they chose to take five years to build that road. And finally got it done and it's all then you would then record the plan. There's nothing an expiration date of that.
What if, what if rules change during now and then?
Well, first of all, we gotta, we gotta see where where they're headed. We're not there yet.
I think we'll probably have to set a timeline.
Yeah, we'd have to. Well, see, like, like um. What happens a lot of times if you're going to do something like that? Even let's say you didn't complete a road. You have to get to a certain point where the road is vested. X amount of money has been spent.
Right.
To get the improvements that were required by the town. So let's say that. Like for for instance, Miss Stan and gravel has a bunch of improvements that they had done to the property. That get their plan vested. They put on all the headwalls. They put on all the box covers. They put in all the retaining walls. They put in all the all the infrastructure that was needed. In order for a road to be built, but did not build the road. So all of their wetlands permits, AOT permits, all those things they complied with. To get all of that infrastructure in. That that basically, if you were going to go the route of. Delaying the construction of a complete site, you'd have to be vested, which would mean you'd have to meet a lot of. Of, you know, requirements, which would would you'd have to sit down and determine what those would be for each specific plan in order to make it vested.
But this is a minor little thing.
Right.
And I was just curious.
Well, the the point on something like that is that the longer they take, the more it's going to cost.
There is, there is a, I'll have to check the number that in the statutes, there is a. There is a time limit in the statute that if you don't. Uh if you don't expend significant amount of money to basically to make. Make the road almost perfect or almost complete in accordance to with requirements. You don't spend any money at all. The approval will lapse.
Yeah.
That I realize that.
Yeah.
You know. But when you.
You gotta.
I just didn't know if they had like a.
Yeah, right. I think we'd we'd have to set.
Yeah, we'd have to go with something. Okay.
Do you have a few things in your folder that?
Okay.
Manifests. And then there's a question about an ever source.
Yeah.
I don't know the answer.
I think I got a call on this. Uh the first thing we're going to do is um.
So we, have we got what? We got two manifests?
Uh yeah, one May tenth and one uh yeah, there's two. Once a master plan update and the other one are invoices for. Circuit rider and plan review.
Let's go back to what, February eighth?
Oh, I can answer that, yeah. You. You may have already approved them, but they weren't paid about in town, I think. The whole thing when when Jane lasts.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And so, yeah, we.
All right.
SNHP and SNHPC, John and Chris have been trying to figure it out and so.
All right, so the first thing we'll we're going to do. Is uh we have the Southern Hampshire. Planning Commission Master Plan Update number sixty eight seventeen for two hundred and fifty four dollars and forty five cents.
So moved.
Yeah, good. All those in favor? The next one is. The Southern Hampshire Planning Commission Circuit Rider Services for March twenty three, excuse me, March twenty twenty three invoice. Sixty eight fifteen is nineteen hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty three cents. And the next one is the Southern Hampshire Planning Commission Plan Review Services for March twenty twenty three. For two hundred and twenty two dollars and sixty four cents. And that comes to a total of two thousand one hundred and forty one dollars and twenty seven cents.
Second.
All those, all those in favor? Right. All right, we got that. Now, the next thing we have here is. A bond release. Of fourteen thousand dollars. And. It uh. It's four. I got a call on this and this was for. Yeah, the work has been completed. And I remember seeing the letter from Jeff Cork stating that it was completed.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to find that line number that's telling us what line it was on. Okay, here we go. To utilize seven driveway existent, excuse me, existing driveway entrances. Off to reach right away for maintenance on the S one thirty six line on the Ever Source right away. So that's what it was on, the one thirty six line.
Okay.
And it was for fourteen thousand dollars. Yeah, and I'm just going to read, okay. This is a. A letter from Ever Source Energy. Who? The state in Hampshire. And um. It was basically just. The bond, just talking about the bond. So. And and I know that.
Yeah.
Teach, teach has already been through it. And this is from three years ago.
Yeah, okay.
March. Twentieth. I see that the bond became effective on.
First, May first, twenty twenty.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, May first, twenty twenty, and then. It was sent to them on the the thirty first of, so it's. Three years ago.
Yeah. All those in favor of releasing it? Or we need a motion? Make a, I'll make a motion to release, release that bond.
All those in favor? Okay. What else we have, Cam?
The February eighth. And. For two thousand one one hundred ninety six dollars for.
Yeah, did I get that one?
No. If Pete doesn't have it, I have to hold on to it, too. We may have already.
I think we did that. Yeah, because I don't have it.
I don't know what happens near guys' folders, I. It's like whatever you guys are leaving there may just get. The ones I got.
Take all this stuff out of here.
I mean, if you don't, if that's. You may want to keep that.
Leave that one there. All right, um so. I'm going to put this like that.
Yeah.
And. We're good on that.
Pick that on my phone.
And.
February.
Um it was, we probably voted on it, the not last meeting, the meeting before, and if you're losing your. Folder and you didn't take it out, it would probably.
That we have something saying we did vote on it.
What do we got to leave in the folder?
It's all for you.
Well, I understand that, but we'll.
If you're not gonna. Like the next meeting, we're going to have the G one forty six transition one in there.
Yeah.
We'd leave that in there if you're not going to go. You know, look at it again before the next meeting. I know they already came in, so. That's.
Yeah.
If you want to hand to me, I can respect whatever you don't want. So there's like.
I have a wood stove. Better than Trevor.
H B in your folder?
Yeah. You have yours?
I got the one thirty six. And one forty seven. I got that.
Going to each of the five cabinet pretty quick.
Leave that in there.
All right. Somebody's going to do it.
Motion adjourned.